Junior is in a hurry.[4.59][4.59][laughter] Called a meeting to order. We have regrets, first of all, from Councillor Donaldson, Councillor Muse, and Deputy Warden Doherty. So we're still enough for a quorum. I'd like to welcome you, everybody here. It's nice to have somebody in the audience. Sometimes we don't have very many, and it's nice to have somebody, even though they're here to make a presentation.
Letter of support we should add to the agenda before the approval.
Yes. Approval of the agenda, does anybody have anything to add? Or, I have one thing I'd like to add, it's a letter of support, a request for a letter of support for somebody they want to nominate for the Order of Nova Scotia.
Okay.
A dear friend of the municipality, and they're asking for me to give him a letter of support. And we'll put that on the agenda.
Where do you want to put it? 7C or no?
Well?
6C.
Yeah.
6C, yeah, that's where it fits, yeah. Okay?
Mr. Warden, there is another letter of support that came in that we think requires a council approval, and it relates to a project that the Village Historique is putting on, so that could be also added under the same line or separate line.
Okay.
If you don't mind.
Sure. Anybody else have anything to add to the agenda? If not, we'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Conflict of interest declaration, does anybody around the table have a conflict of interest with anything, any item on the agenda? Hearing none, we'll go on to the next item, which is presentation, and we have a presentation from Cat Snip. Eileen Cody. Get set up, and put the mic on, and you go ahead and introduce yourself.
Okay. Good evening, and thanks to Argyle Council for allowing us to make this presentation tonight on behalf of Operation Cat Snip. My name is Eileen Cody, and I'm president of the Board of Directors for Operation Cat Snip, and with me is Frida Perry, who's the secretary treasurer for our organization. This is our second presentation to Argyle Council, and we thank you for your support last year. We realize that you deal with many issues, so we will again give you background on our organization and an update on our work this past year. We begin with this statistic, you saw it last year and you're seeing it again, little bit hard to grasp, but definitely a reason for our being. When you think about cats and the way they can reproduce, a male and a female cat over seven years equals 420,000 cats. A lot of cats, a big statistic, and I will come back to that later. Our name, Operation Cat Snip, is an acronym for spay, neuter is priority, and that's our work. Our mandate, we were founded two years ago to provide a frontline service not provided in Yarmouth Town or County areas. And what that is, is providing low-cost or no-cost spay or neuter services for pet, stray, and feral cats in our area. And the majority that we do are pet and stray felines, but we do also deal occasionally with feral cats. Again, to clarify, there are two other organizations that deal with cat overpopulation in Yarmouth County. One of them is the Yarmouth SPCA, and the other is the TNR Group, which is Trap, Neuter, and Release is what it stands for. Yarmouth SPCA does take in a limited number of cats and kittens, but for reasons in terms of what the numbers that they can provide for is very limited. And TNR focuses on feral or wildcat populations, particularly where there are colonies, and assists with neutralizing in the sense of spaying and neutering, and then releasing them, so kind of helping to deal with the population and increases to the population. What we do, we respect the work that the SPCA and TNR groups do, but we realize we have another focus, and that's a frontline defense. We're proactive in terms of dealing with cats and trying to provide a service to those who cannot afford it. So in terms of people who may have pets, or have taken on strays that happen to be in their area and are trying to deal with those strays, we offer to provide a service in terms of spaying or neutering the animals. And we work with the support of the Parade Street Animal Hospital. They support us in terms of the surgeries. We still have to pay for the professional service that they provide, but they do certainly help us out in terms of cost a bit. Operation Cat Snip was founded two years ago in January of 2012. We were founded as a registered nonprofit society, and at the end of May that first year, we were able to do our first surgery. And by July of 2012, we were able to get standing as a Canadian registered charity, and that allowed us to issue tax receipts to individuals or those who wanted to support us. And in the course of 2013, we have spayed or neutered 86 cats, 51 females, 35 males, and since starting in 2012, we've done approximately 200. The cost of spaying and neutering, I think as a colleague of mine mentioned last year, the females are a little more high maintenance, a little bit more costly in terms of the surgery. But in any case, when we have applicants, we deal with males or females as needed. Our application process is available locally in several businesses, at the Parade Street Animal Hospital, at the food bank, and so people are able to access the application there, also online, people can download it. The applications go through a vetting process by our board, and basically from that, we book the surgeries at Parade Street. Social media, our Facebook page and our website help in terms of getting the message out there, and certainly since we've started, we are becoming more recognized and more acknowledged as a source of help. Our applicants take responsibility. Although we are looking for support, we do a lot of fundraising, we also get considerable support from our applicants. They must submit in their application information on their personal and household income. They frequently donate to the cost. It's not unusual when they're applying for a spay or neuter, for them to offer, in the application process, it asks if they can provide some help, and people donate $20 toward the cost, or 40, or 10, or sometimes if they're having several cats done, you know, they'll give a bit for each of the cats that are being operated on. It's not that they can afford the full amount, but they will support us. Our applicants have to take responsibility for the pre-care and the post-care of the surgeries, and that's true in the case of those who are looking after strays, so that's one of the provisions in terms of us helping out with stray cats, that someone is there to look after them when they've had their surgery. And usually, our applicants are expected to pick up, or to deliver their cats and pick them up from the vet, so they are taking part in it. It's not, you know, a handout in any sense. But we have continued need. There isn't a lot of room at the SPCA for cats and kittens who are out there, and many times people will call and find out that at this time, they're not able to take a cat or a batch of kittens that have landed on somebody's doorstep or in somebody's yard. We're also dealing with the issue of people who have moved away, and we know with the economic circumstances in the area, people move out west, or they move to the city, and sometimes are not taking responsibility for a cat. Dogs seem to be better looked after, perhaps. Somebody finds a home for the dog, or the dog is taken in, but cats seem to be left to their own devices. And I'm sure all of you know that cats and kittens are dumped on the side of the road, back roads in the county, places where there's a barn or a wharf. People think that, well, they'll do okay there. So we have a fair number of situations where there are cats that have no support and are increasing the population of cats out there. And with that, you also have the problem that cats can impact wildlife in terms of birds as a source of food, and on the other side of it, becoming the source of food for predators like coyotes, and perhaps bringing some of those animals closer to where people are living. At present, it says there, 200 cats have been snipped. Actually, we have done, as of this time, 208, and we have 12 who are booked for surgeries in the next week and a half. So we're approximately 220 cats in the last two years. But the need is great, and as we become better known, we get more applications. So we have applications from the town and from the county, including the municipality here, and it's very difficult to cover all the concerns that are out there, to get the surgeries done without funding. And how are we supported? We have an annual membership, and our membership fee is $10 a year. Ongoing fundraisers, and we are fundraising throughout the year, and we do a variety of things. We're involved in craft sales, bake sales. We have a lot of volunteer support, but still, it's an ongoing issue. We have our third spaghetti dinner coming up at the end of May, and certainly, if you're interested, it's a great evening, it's a dinner and a silent auction, and each year that we've done it, it's brought in a good amount of funding to help us with our work. And we've also had some very generous donations from individuals and from businesses in the area, and we're very appreciative of that. But it's a partnership, and we are looking to our municipal base for some support. We have done a presentation to the town of Yarmouth at the end of January. We will be presenting to Yarmouth Municipality in early April, and we're here tonight. And we feel that it's kind of like a three-footed stool, we need the support of our municipal units. It's a community problem, and it requires a community solution. With a no-kill policy for cat overpopulation, there are various aspects to it, and one of them would be humane education, and that is hopefully reaching young people, either through the schools or through programs that they're involved in, to let them know of the concern and the need to recognize proper care of animals, and in this case, cats. We will be doing a presentation of a film that was produced in the last couple of years called Wild at Heart. We'll be doing the presentation at the Yarmouth Library on April 16. That particular film, Wild at Heart, was produced here in Nova Scotia and looks at the feral cat issue around the province as a concern, and in fact, members of Operation Cat Snip were interviewed for input on the situation here in Yarmouth. A community approach also looks at the need for proper animal control legislation, and certainly there are bylaws for dogs. At present, there is not bylaws in place to deal with cats. And we also feel that working in conjunction with groups like TNR, the group that deals with the feral cat colonies in areas like some of the wharves in Argyle Municipality, that is also a need, that helps. But in addition to that, we are frontline, and we're kind of like the flu shot. We deal with the problem before it becomes more serious, or we reduce the number of cats that are out there. I think it's important also to kind of understand what's happening province-wide, and as you probably are aware, or you may be aware, Nova Scotia SPCA was provided with a funding of $100,000 to offer a low-cost feline spay and neuter program provincially. And they are, but it's HRM-based, it's based at a clinic in Halifax, so cats need to get to Halifax. And for people who are struggling to provide a surgery for their cat here in Yarmouth, trip to Halifax is probably not in the cards to get the animal spayed or neutered. So that's something I think to be aware of, and you may have also read in the papers about an organization in Sydney, Cape Breton, the Feral and Abandoned Cat Society, which has attempted to tackle the problem there. They have been funded annually for the last year and a half by CBRM to the amount of $25,000, and that is helping them to deal with the problem there, which in a semi-rural and urban center is considerable. Other areas of the province have taken on different initiatives, and we do read about programs like Operation Cat Snip perhaps, or a variation on it doing work in a particular county or area, because it's not just here, it is everywhere. So we're back to that statistic again, and two cats over seven years, between them, their offspring, and their continuing offspring could equal the amount of 420,000 cats. So if it sounds like an exaggeration, you could have it, or you could quarter it, or you could divide it by eight, but it's still a lot of cats. And we also feel that it's worth thinking about. If you like cats, we need your help. If you don't like cats, we still need your help. Operation Cat Snip is asking the Argyle Council for a grant of $1,500 for the upcoming year. We know you get lots of requests, but we hope you will give us your consideration. And on behalf of the Board of Operation Cat Snip, I'd like to thank you for your time tonight, and if you have questions, Frida or myself will attempt to answer them. We also have a newsletter which we've passed out to Chris, and I think he'll get it, it's just a two-pager, but it gives some ideas of our recent activities, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Eileen and Frida. Does anybody have any questions? Councillor Serret.
Could you tell me what the cost is to spay, neuter, one cat?
I can. If it's a female cat that's mature, which means that they go into regular heat cycles, which causes greater time and difficulty doing surgery because of blood vessels that they have to deal with, it's $167 plus tax for a female cat. So we get 50% of our HST back, but it still costs us about $170. For a female and a male is, let's tell them, it's about $120, the male. And they have to be at least six months old. We do get, the Parade Street Animal Hospital is great in giving us better prices for feral cats. Feral cats, they, of course, the impact out in the wild is feral cats, so we get those neutered for and spayed for about $100 a cat. And you must realize, a feral cat is a cat that's born in the wild, so it can survive. It's grown up in the wild, it's like a rabbit or a raccoon. But people are abandoning cats. They think, like, down at the wharf, they can dump them down there, they'll catch mice, they'll live on fish, they'll be happily ever after, but cats who've had a bowl in front of them all their life don't realize that these little critters that skitter around their food, and so, you know, they starve, they freeze, they live dreadful lives. You're probably familiar with Rowena Dotchewatt, who looks after the Dennis Point Wharf cat.
Yes, I've heard.
They're doing a great job, but they needed our help. We helped them do twelve cats in December, because there just isn't the money up there, there isn't the, you know, the resources.
Yep. Mr. Warden, could I have a second question?
Yes, sir.
Just be quick.[1321.98][1321.98][laughter] The $1,500 you are requesting, if council so decided, would this just be on spaying, neutering, or is the money go to something else?
Just spaying and neutering. I mean, I've got our financial statement here from last year, and the little money that we have to spend, you know, because you have to make money to spend money, so when we're fundraising, there are fees associated with that. An entire year, the only funds that we spend that's not spaying and neutering is less than $1,800. Well, actually, and $900 for HST, so that's all part of it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Murphy.
I commend you on your presentation here, and, you know, I live in a small community in Little River Harbour, and I talked to you about this, Frida, before at the wharf, and there's a lot of cats down there. They seem to be doing fine, you know, because, as like you said, they are feral cats, and they're in the dumpsters, and people, and so do I, like, you know, you bring food down there, I bring probably a bag of cat food to the washman that's down there, like, once every week and a half, and so does other people in the community that do that. But I've noticed, and I forgot to tell you at the first, when I was first coming, that there were small ones, there were small ones, this fall.
They were kittens.
They were kittens, and I don't see them anymore.
They probably died.
Yeah, and I know there's sheds.
They're alive. I realize that.
We had a bad winter.
We take food, and we've had a terrible winter.
Yes.
And I live on the dump.
No.
And my house cat will live 15 to 17 years, but the mortality rate for these cats is four to five years.
Yes.
And what a dreadful way to live.
It's true. So I just want to let you know that I support you guys tremendously, like, you know, and hopefully that council will look at it also the way I'm looking at it.
I appreciate that. The more funds we have, the more we can spay and neuter.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
Thank you. There's nobody else, but I want to thank you very much for your presentations, very good presentation, and even though we had seen it before, it's always a good refresher. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And congratulations on the job that you do.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
And we'll be looking at it during our annual meeting budget deliberations.
We appreciate that, and it can always be members of our organization, everyone that helps. People think that it has to be a large amount, but as the people give you $10, I mean, that can help us out.
Yes, yeah, good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Business, next item is business arising from the minutes. Boundary review, Mr. CAO, do you have a report on that?
Very brief, we're going to, we set out our plan of action, our timeframe, and we'll be releasing the webpage for the boundary review on Monday, so that will come out. So there's a video, I'm afraid, unfortunately, there is a video that actually outlines some of the preliminary things that we've done, like what is a boundary review, because not everybody is intimately familiar with that process, right?
Yeah.
So that's kind of basic information, and then we're in the process of creating other videos that explain option one and option two, and how the community can communicate with us.
Mm-hmm.
And so that's ongoing, and we will meet our deadlines as we go through.
Yes.
We did receive information that's actually, I believe it's attached to the, yes, it is, 7B, that relates to, it was a late ad, but it actually confirms some of the information we got from Service Nova Scotia around the process.
Yes.
Because, again, this was the first time that the process asks us to select two options to bring to the community rather than select one.
Yes, that's right.
So that's kind of, that's confirmed by the URB.
Okay, thank you. And the second one is municipal administration building.
I have nothing new to report on that, actually.
No, okay. We would be working on that eventually, before too long, I guess, but there's other things that are pressing. Financial report.
So I have it attached, if I may get right into it. Attached the financial report for your consideration, and a couple of changes I should make note of. Well, first of all, there's an unrestricted surplus at this point, the end of January, we're still showing a surplus. Most of that is generated by savings or timing around expenditures. So what I've done is, one of the revenue line items that we had up until this point that you have seen as a line item was coming out of our operating reserve, that was coming into our revenues in order to pay for the tennis court retrofit. So because that project is going to be deferred into the new year, what I've done is actually reduced that revenue amount. So that revenue amount is just simply a transfer from one fund to another.
Yes.
But it was budgeted for. It was budgeted that we would require that money in order to do the work. So because we're not doing the work, what I'm recommending is that that transfer not actually transpire.
Yes.
Because the whole intent of the fund was for that purpose. So that will come into next year. So that is a major change from the financials that you've seen in the past. If you notice on page one, total revenues are essentially even to the budget versus actual. So where we saw some positive variances under return of investments and other extraordinary revenues, projects that we hadn't anticipated, that we hadn't anticipated the amount that we were actually successful in getting, but then all of that is offset by the amount that we've put in, that we've taken away from a transfer from the reserve. So it's, so what, you know, long story, or I guess short story long, your revenues are almost bang on when you take everything and net it out.
Makes more sense what you said.
Right, yeah. So it's actually, prior to that, it was actually reflecting a surplus that was higher than what is actually going to happen. However, that being said, if we look through some of the expenditures, we will see some of these reductions in costs come to fruition at the end of the year. They will be maintained for the most part, especially under general government services. They will be maintained for the most part, especially under general government services. There's many lines under that section, but they all add up to a positive variance of $75,000. That's a combination of factors, mostly me anticipating the worst case scenario and it not happening. So, so that's part of the reason why that's looking more positive. Comparing to the prior year, it's actually lower as well in a lot of cases. Under protective services, we've seen EMO, actually, the major piece on EMO is every year we've had the civic sign initiatives that we've put out, and it's an application process. And for the first two, three years, we saw a lot of intake because there was a lot of people who didn't have the blue signs. So what we're finding now is there are less people applying because they don't need them. So we've, you know, we, I mean, there's clearly still a continuing need, but that need has shrunk considerably based on that initiative. So that's, that's, that's the kind of project that, that you want, right? And so, so there are other initiatives that we're thinking about doing. And one of them in Public Works is, which includes signage. And one might be to take a look at the private lane signage. Because there's a lot of private driveways that we, as councils, approve a name for that road because there's more than three residences on that driveway. But it's actually a private driveway that's given a name. And so the signage on those, on those is very inconsistent. And so if you think about emergency, you know, if you don't have a proper sign to bring you to that road, you may have an issue. So there's, there are other initiatives that we're considering at the Public Works level and things that will probably find, find their way on the EMO agenda as we, as we iron them out.
Okay, good.
So just moving on, transportation services has got a negative variance, and that is due to the, the special request that you've approved. Environmental health, which includes sewage collection and also garbage collection, overall, when you take it all into account, has a positive variance. What we've seen is, and I've said this before, we are seeing increases in landfill tipping fees, and that's due to volume. That, and we've always been fairly conservative in our budgets around that. But it's jumped up quite considerably compared to the trend. And that's obviously costing the municipality money, but it's also somewhat aligned to the amount of garbage that's being produced and.
It is cheaper than doing cleanups in illegal sites?
Well.
If it's going to the dump, to the landfill.
Yeah. I mean, if it's going to the landfill, it's clearly garbage. It's unclear exactly why there was a spike. But we do know that there can be like spikes and like peaks and valleys depending on the economy as well. As the disposable income is higher, there's generally more purchasing and more waste that comes out of that purchase. So that could be a reason. It's difficult to say for sure. But we're still maintaining our budget for the most part in that area.
Yeah.
Tourism has a negative variance. And that is the special funding request that YASTA had made to this council that was approved. That wasn't budgeted, so that's why it's showing negative. And however, there's housing and RDA, that actually includes a lot of different line items. But the bulk of the savings there are due to the fact that the REN was budgeted to be a full year and it was not. And also the Argyle Economic Development Initiatives haven't quite come to the point where it's, where it's, where we're investing money, we're investing time, but we haven't invested money yet. So that's why there's a considerable variance there. Recreation Services, it's almost entirely the tennis court retrofit that's, that's generating that positive variance of $68,000. Of course, we know we're going to do that next year. And so that's kind of the high level, semi-high level analysis of the, of where we, why we're, where we're at. And I am still anticipating a surplus at the end of the year. And I will be making recommendations to council next month before the end of the fiscal year in terms of transferring amounts to reserve to earmark that amount for future projects that we know we're going to do in the future. So, and those will involve the tennis courts, and they will involve economic development. So we'll, I'll prepare a request for decision for council at the next meeting or committee the whole for your, for your approval. So that's the financial report.
Okay, thank you very much. Yes, Counselor Saret.
Will that include, will the REN be spent by March of this year? You think the REN will get involved in 2014?
The, the REN funds, there'll be maybe $3,000 a hell of a spent this year, maybe. And that'll be offset by some admin fees. So the REN will be virtually zero, but it will be almost a full year next year.
Thank you.
I guess what's being spent for the REN right now is we got a grant to cover that, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you for that. Good report. Other business?
To accept.
To accept?
To accept.
I'd like to make the motion that we accept the financial report as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded, although in favor significantly, aye. Both aye. Motion's carried. Other business and for decision, RCMP update. Your turn, Monsieur Lacroix. And you can introduce yourself and your associates. Lacroix.
Thank you for joining us. Just to introduce today. I'm presenting the operational report for 2013 for the Yarmouth Rural detachment. With me this evening, there's Peggy Boudreaux. I don't think I need to introduce Peggy, everyone knows Peggy. And there's Stephen Carter. Stephen is a criminal analyst that works out of our office. He was a major contributor to the report that you have. And, but before we go into the report itself, I'd like to get Stephen to introduce himself and talk a little bit about his role. This is a new position. This is two years old. It's two years that he's been working in our office. And he'll give you a little overview of what he does and his responsibilities. So go ahead, Stephen.
Thank you. Thank you very much for having me tonight. It's good to be here. Just a slight correction, it's been three years. I know, I know time has flown. But I started almost three, three years ago last month, so. I'm one of five crime reduction analysts or criminal intelligence analysts in Nova Scotia. My unit is unique in that it's based out of Halifax. It's an analytical unit. But we, as crime reduction analysts, are embedded in the detachments throughout the province. So there's one in Halifax District, two of us in Southwest Nova, and two in Northeast Nova. They're thinking of expanding that in the near future, I believe. I started, like I said, in Yarmouth County three years ago. Very small area when I started. It was three detachments, Mettague and Yarmouth Town and Yarmouth Rural. Since then, I've expanded to 10 detachments. And I serve five counties, Bedigby, Yarmouth, Shelburne, Queens, and Lunenburg. It's a very large area. I actually did a report for the DPO of the district policing officer saying that that area is too big for one analyst to handle. But it's government, so you have to make do and you, you take what you're given. So my life before the RCMP, I was a university lecturer at the University of New Brunswick and Crandall University. I have a PhD in modern history with a specialization in the Middle East and international affairs. I thankfully, because of that background, I've been able to, and I continue to contribute to national security investigations and organized crime as well out of the city. Once in a while, I'm asked to, to help out. But I have a very personal connection to Yarmouth County in that I married a girl from here. I married a pitman from Deerfield, who actually used to work across the street in the courthouse. So it's nice to be back here and be close to her family. The work of a crime analyst is varied. It's very much like I'm a troubleshooter if there's a problem going on, that I'm contacted. One of the, one of the realities of policing now in the technological age is that there's a lot of data to go through. Members are busy doing their thing in their small area. Communication is important between these areas. And what I do is I daily and consistently go through data from all my areas, look for patterns, look for trends. If you have a break and enter, or if you have a, your car's broken into, chances are I'm going to be reading that file and looking for connections with other areas. So there was good police work being done before I started this job, but I see myself and the other crime reduction analysts as another layer of support for policing. Some of the things that I do, that I've been doing for the area is offender management. Again, using data to identify offenders who are a danger of repeating once they get out of jail. These are offenders who get out of jail and they go straight to the liquor store to shoplift, or it's almost habitual what they do. And statistics show that the bulk of property crime in a community is done by a fairly small group of people. And the, the idea behind offender management and focusing that attention is looking for those individuals and ensuring that if they are on court ordered conditions, like a curfew or a, or a house arrest, that they are abiding by that. Again, it's logical to think that if you have 40 people on conditions, why check all 40 equally if only some are a huge danger to the community? So what my work does is it focuses on those individuals that are likely to break into your house or cause damage to your property. And as you can see with the statistics in this report, we've seen a great decline in some of the property crime. And again, I should point out, the property crime is our focus because it constitutes your largest criminal caseload in a community. It has a definite time and place that it occurred. And typically, there's a lot of series. People break into cottages, they do a multiple spree. It's harder to target crimes against persons like assaults because typically people know each other. They are random or they occur just once. So you have the statistical data and the data behind the property crime to really provide good analytical support and get it lowered in the community. Again, I look for trends and patterns. If you have a series of break and enters, I'll be looking to link them between areas. There have been some detachment areas that have not been great at communicating. If, if they have a break and enter where there's a particular MO or if there's something being targeted, like TVs or ATVs, I'm able to communicate between detachment areas to ensure that everybody's up to speed on what's going on. One of the fun parts of my job is prediction analysis. If you have enough data and enough evidence, you can actually predict when the next crime is going to occur on certain days and on certain times within a geographic area. So far, I think I've done eight of these, and I'm five for eight in being right. So I've got, that's better than the odds because it's usually 67% chance. So so far, I've been very fortunate.
Better than a witness, man.
So that's not much of a compliment, given what they do. So I, I focus, again, the work of a crime reduction analyst, you're, you're basically a troubleshooter. You're trying to lower crime by being on top of things when they happen. And communication is very important. Like I said, I communicate on the federal side as well as the provincial and what I'm doing with intelligence coming in. So I also, on the strategic side, I, I look back, and it took a long time, and working with data can be rough because you are totally dependent on what the people did when they put the data in there the first place. So it's typically not very clean. There are errors. And when you're dealing with six years of data in all the areas, it takes a while to sort through the mess. But when it's said and done, I have six, six years to look at to compare what's going on now with six years. You'll notice in the report, if you took a look at it, that I've developed a threshold of what would be normal for your area for crime. Typically, I hear members say, oh, there's been four break and enters, everything's, you know, everything's topsy-turvy and a mess. Well, this allows the supervisors and the members to look back and say, okay, what can we typically expect in a given month or a given year for crimes? And so, say, break and enters between seven and 20 would be normal for a given year. And that allows them to do that. It also looks, it gives us an idea of the trends that are occurring within a community. And again, from the trends that I've seen with yours, there's been great decreases in Yarmouth County and in other areas as well. Thankfully, the, one of the, the benefits that we've seen from the offender management program is that many have moved away. Our loss is Alberta's gain. So not just Alberta, but a lot of them have moved away. I'd like to think it's because we put pressure on them and made them, made it, made them unable to do crime in this area, so they have to go somewhere else. But, but it's been a great success. And we are still, it's still in the development phase, crime reduction. There's a lot of creativity that's possible with it. There's a lot of, it's, since it's new, the bar is just being set. We can, we can do all kinds of fun stuff with it and use your imagination, sky's the limit. So, and lots of neat software to use. Much more exciting than teaching modern history in the university, I have to say. But, but thankfully, I'm still with the University of New Brunswick. I'm still in a research affiliate, still publishing on my field. And so, but very happy to be doing this out in the field as well, not stuck in headquarters. It's good to be out in the field. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Must be interesting. Do you, you don't do, Carter, you don't do, you don't take cases, right?
No. I'm a civilian, not a regular member.
Constables do that, the regular members do that. Thank you.
I must say, I'm a, I'm a kind of old fashioned policeman there. When I was told three years ago that I was getting a, we were getting a criminal analyst at the office, I didn't believe they would make a big difference in our operation. And that would make a big, you know, it was going to be a big thing. But Stephen has brought a scientific approach to our technique and our operations. And I, he's become a real value partner in our operation. And you'll see in those graphs and statistics that we have in the report that every little move that we've changed in our operation and so on, there's a curve that reflects that. And it makes us, it makes you understand better, and me, where we go on with this and, you know, the investment you make in our, in our operation. Well, you can see it there directly. So now, it's a, it's a great, great resource. And I hope we, we keep having this resource for a long time. Those positions were added when the province added position for every municipality, like street crime and school resource officer. It's from the same funding. They had taken a, for, for this particular position, someone from the Shelburne Street Crime was taken off the street and Stephen was hired from, from that fund. So hopefully, the province will, will keep that funding. I will speak a little bit about our report there. I think, I hope you all seen it. I'll go by page by page there. And if you have any questions, please stop me anytime there if you have concern or questions. Just the overall detachment, there are manpower at the office. There's no new position. We still have the same establishment there. Where last year, in 2013, we dealt with two parental leave, maternity or paternity leave there. There was two. So we put a lot of stress on our capability to cover the shift and so on. But we, we did it, but it's always make difficult for our operation. In the same time, our street crime unit, since last summer, has been operating with only one member. There's, usually, there's three guys there. But the two of them were transferred last summer. They put their house for sale and within weeks, they were gone. But the people that were named to replace them still have their house for sale. They had their house for sale three months before those transferred. And they still have their houses for sale. So I asked that those transfers be canceled. And as of April 1st, they will be canceled. And other people have been identified to replace them. So hopefully, by the end of the spring, we should be a full complement of officer again. But that's been the thing. And when we talk about curves, and later on in the report, our street crime enforcement, as soon as those guys are gone. as soon as those guys are gone, you see the curve start, as far as number of charges and arrests is way down. So, it, it shows really, every time little things happen in your office, the numbers show through Stephen's.
Street, street crime, is that federal or provincial?
It's provincial.
Provincial, right.
Yeah. Again, those are the position the province give out to all municipalities.
Yes, oh, yes.
And it's part of your policing package, you're not bill extra for those, but it's, it's part of the big picture there.
Bring, bring them all.
Yeah. Even if they operated with a reduced manpower, they were pretty successful there. There was lots of search warrants executed, a lot of people charged, few interesting seizure. Those pictures are actual picture from our operation, like the helicopter, that's an RCMP helicopter that we used late last summer. And the, the other seizure of crack, that was a seizure that we made in, and actually, we made this in U minus. Let's see, the people from here that we followed on in U minus, that we were arrested, so that was the, the actual drugs that we seized. Or in that, that, that unit's still operating, operating very well. We talk about Stephen's position and his, his involvement in our operation and his role. We talk a little bit about the school safety program. See, the school safety program is involved in really two things, and first is, his main job is be in school every day and teach their program to, to most of the school there. By the end of the school year, it'll be, every school will have at least one their class. And, and also, it's, this is given by Corporal Mario Ross, he's in schools every day. He's got a very good rapport with all the principals and the staff and the kids. And we don't get any calls from the schools anymore. Before he was in place, we would get calls, we were at the schools all the time for dealing with issues. Mario looks after all that, and even prevents everything, like, there's no, we, we're not getting those calls for assault or, or the drug stuff. Everything is dealt at the school, by the school, with the support of Mario, and makes it, reduce our call for service, and again, supports the school, so it's a great addition. On top of that, Mario managed the, the safe program, that's our program where we, we prepared the school for any possibility of, I think, like, we've got a lot in the states there, those shootings that we get in the school. So, Mario do lockdown drill with the, the kids and the teachers and the staff. Mario makes update all the plans, all the schools have their, their blueprints and their plan, and all the contact numbers is uploaded into a databank, and it's updated every year. Mario looks after that, and we have access to that. Every car just can pull up the blueprint and who to call and all that stuff, if we have to respond to, to, to a call. We also, with this program, every members at the armed detachment have to be updated into the, the armed response to those schools. This is a training. The initial training is three days, it has to be a one day research every year. So, that's been done in Toronto. So, every members have to go there once a year to, to update the, the training. And also, we have, we've been getting new equipment this year in relation to, so it wouldn't be outgun if we, we face a situation with someone there. So, I think I've showed at the police advisory board there, the new equipment we got, and it's making, it's going to make a big difference if we have, if we got a, a call to go on. Our priority for last year, one of was road safety. We really targeted on handheld device, distracted driving, texting, talking on the phone and so on. We did a lot of patrol with armored vehicle and did things like this. Made a, we increased a lot of our stats in that regard. Still a lot of work to do, and I'm intending to have this as a priority again this year. We did pretty well in, with the impaired drivers. There was not a, a priority on paper for us, but still, it's always something that we look for. I'm thinking about having this also as a priority this year, and do any, some special enforcement, try to increase our, our enforcement with that regard. We're still being supported by traffic services. The traffic service has presently three members at our, that are posted at our detachment. They're not directly linked to our office, but they, they work out of the same building. Those, and they're planning to have two extra position also posted in Yarmouth. Those guys, I saw they do, full-time enforcement, and the stat that you have here in the, in the report are only our detachment stats. Those guys are five, six times higher than ours, and it's all mostly in Yarmouth County. So, lots of enforcement, lots of presence. Those guys drive same cars we do, people see them, they think it's us, and it makes, increase our visibility, it makes it also, you know, helps with the overall police service. We had a project last year with the, the reserve, the Acadian First Nation, we had a summer student that worked with us for the summer. He was paid by the reserve, he worked with us, and worked very well, and we intend to do this again, this year again. Had a meeting with the, the leadership of the reserve last week, and they're planning to have the, the same program with us, so that's something we're going to do again this year, probably. You want to talk about your thing right now? Okay. Peggy will talk a little bit about her, her senior program, and I'll beat you on the statistic.
I think you've all got a copy of my report that Chris forwarded to you today. The senior safety program is in its third year. Starting its third year, we have completed two years of the program. The first year, like I said in the report, is, was to basically organize and get the program going, because it was new to us. So, the first year was basically for that, and the visits that we did in those, that first year were, you know, basic visits, plain stuff, the fluffy stuff, like we call it. The second year, which we did last year, we got into the more serious things, referrals from the RCMP, referrals from different agencies. And as we're going on into the second year, everybody is starting to know us. We're getting good referrals from different agencies and the community, because they see us out there. There, we're getting a lot of referrals, a lot of phone calls, the program is working well. The program has evolved, like we say, into two major components, the prevention and the intervention. The prevention part is the part that when we go into the seniors' home and we see what's, what, what they have and what's out there, we ask questions. The other part to prevent, it can be from just having a mat on your floor that you're going to fall, a false prevention. The other part is the intervention, that we have to get involved with different agencies. Sometimes it's the police, sometimes it's continuing care, there's all kinds of agencies. Adult Protection is one of the agencies that we've used quite a bit in the last year. The partnership that we have with the other agencies, specifically the RCMP, that help us identify some of the issues, the criminal ones, the, the financial abuse especially, that we've, because we are, have close contact with the RCMP and we work with them, they refer to us and we refer to them. So, the connection that we have had with the seniors prior to, or that we know of in the community, it helps them and it helps us, that we can perhaps get a better solution to the problems. At the end of two thousand and twelve, the municipality of Argyle itself had a hundred and sixty-nine new clients, some of which we still see on a, on monthly basis sometimes, sometimes it's even weekly, some of the critical cases that we have. This year, we had eighty-three new clients in the municipality of Argyle that are in the program. They're not all visited, some of them are just people that we went in and did a vial of life, and there's no other issues, but some of them, it's, it's daily visits, it's sometimes phone calls, it's, people ask me sometimes, "Well, are you busy?" Well, we are busy, because when you talk about one specific caseload, it can take hours and can take weeks and months, and one specific caseload, I'm still working on it, and it's been from March last year. So, the specifics, you know, it can be different, it's always a different circumstance. The projects that we've been working on throughout the, the year, like different things, I have partnered with different, different organizations. One of them is the recreation department for the municipality of Argyle. We did the seniors' tea, we did a Christmas party, the fun stuff, I guess, we, we partnered together, we did a CPR course, that some of the funding that we helped put through to our program, that we have in our program, that we helped the recreation department. So, we're, we're working together to, to do events and things that will help out the There's also, we've, we're part of different committees and different workshops that we've attended throughout the year, both myself and the coordinator for the municipality of Yarmouth. We work a lot together in different circumstances, because the support that we provide each other in different areas, it's, it's, it's been great to have a full-time coordinator in the municipality of Yarmouth. When we first started, the first year, as you remember, it was part-time, so it was a different thing, but now that we have the two of us that are full-time and we work together, we can support each other and identify different issues. We sit on an affordable and safe housing committee together, there's members of the council here that are on this committee, it's a, it's a newly formed committee, yes, Aldrick is. It's something to do with the housing, which is one of the major issues that we have in our area. There is no housing, especially for seniors, nowhere to bring your senior in an emergency, in a crisis. There's the hospital, and Juniper House, which is a twenty-four seven, and of course, if the RCMP, which work twenty-four seven, have a call, and through the night or on a Sunday, or whenever it is, they bring them to the hospital, or they refer to us if it's a senior. So, we've dealt with some of these cases also. We did a training session also, myself and Doris, in called Seniors Friendly. This is a program that is designed to help communities and businesses and organization recognize the needs of seniors in order to provide optimum service and age-friendly to the area. We're, we did, we did this course in, in November, so we're going to be working at it and trying to organize some meetings that we can do with different groups, like different organizations, different businesses, that we can train them on how they can adapt their, their buildings or their places for, to be senior friendly. It can be a lighting, it can be numerous things. So, we are trained to do this now, but we, it's a work in progress, we will be doing that in the near future. I must say that, in closing, I, I have learned a lot from this program in the past two years, there's a lot of different things that we deal with, and on a daily basis, it can change from one minute to the other, it changes. I've enjoyed the program, I'm still enjoying it, and I look forward to working with the community and, and trying to help the seniors as much as we can. I'm looking forward for, if you have referrals or any questions or any concerns that you have in the community, please come forth and talk to me about it, and we can see what we can do. Is there any questions? Nope. All right, thanks.
Very good, thank you. Peggy?
The, the next thing on the, on the report is the, our, one other priority we had was, and it's always reduced property crime, that's our, there's initiative we took five years ago, it's still working very well, and we, every year, we keeping the same strategy, is basically a legal harassment of all the prolific offenders that Stephen was, was talking earlier. We visiting them home, every time there's, they're running on conditions, we visit them almost daily now. And we also, if there's any crime occurring, we target them proactively, and we really go after them. Well, we'll see in the statistic there, the, the result of our effort there, but it's still working very well. You have the, the page there for property crime for this statistic. I won't go over all the numbers, but if we look at a total of property crime, we introduced our strategy in two thousand nine, and it's been in, in decline since then, and it's still going, going down. So, we will keep this priority and that strategy again this year. No change, changing something that works. If we, if, just to address, maybe someone may have a concern with regard to the number of arson that we had last year, and I had highlighted here, there was a, quite a, we talked about a twenty-one percent higher arson in, in two thousand and thirteen. I'm not concerned about that number, basically, it's only, that's over a five-year average, it's only, we had twelve last year, we had thirteen this, the year before, we had twelve, last year, we had thirteen. It's only a few little numbers, because the number is so low, one or two makes a big difference in the percentage thing, so I'm not concerned with that, I'm just looking at the overall picture, there's no problem there, and our program's still going down, so we keep doing what we're doing. Crime against a person, same thing. Last year, two thousand and twelve, we had nine sexual offense, we got thirteen this year. Only a few numbers make a, an increase of eighty-six percent. Not minimizing the seriousness of sexual assault, but we don't have a problem as far as numbers go, okay? So, again, if we look, we never introduced a strategy to fight proactively personal crime, but the, since two thousand and nine, the, the number of assault, reported assault have been pretty steady. So, again, there's no, no trend indicating that there's a problem there. It's regard to the, the proactive work we do, when we say proactive, is, it's not like when we get a call, we go and ensure and investigate, is setting up surveillance or targeting someone and being proactive, those things. Since we increased those, our charges of, let's say, impaired drivers have been steady going up, and our, our charges of property crime has been going up as well. The, we introduced the, the checkpoint in system in two thousand and nine, and again, we, we see our impaired driving charges increasing, and our, the, the, the visit of the colonels that we do at their houses, again, there's a different trend there. In two thousand and nine, when we started on this, our charge for breaches of those condition was increased dramatically, it started to go way up. However, for the last two years, those numbers are going down. We still don't those checks, and those numbers aren't going down, because the guys either moved away, or they know we don't those checks, and they're staying in their houses. So, this is directly, and it shows on our, on our crime data, as far as the, the number of break and enters and so on, they were still going down. So, our strategy again, all those numbers and statistics and graphs supports our, our Reduction for call for service, the false alarm that was introduced, again, and that was introduced in two thousand and ten, the strategy for reducing false calls of nine-one-one and false alarm, it's going way, way down. And the, the last graph, if we look at, if you look at the three lines, the blue, the red, and the green, our files now, we're getting more files, total of files of investigation, but our call for service are down, and our, our proactive work is up as well. So, we have more time now to do proactive work, and we're catching more people. So, overall, things are getting pretty well in the, into places, and we're going to keep going this way. Any question on what we do? Concern? Concern? No?
You're going to work yourself out of a job.
No, that's not going to happen.
I guess not.
What I'd like to ask council now is, I'm preparing my, I'm reporting to you for every year, but I operate on the fiscal year myself for my operation. My plans are for starting April 1st to March 31st of next year and I'm in the process of preparing my plan for 2014, 2015, and I'd like to have your feedback. Maybe you can reach out to the people in your community and so on. What's are the concern? And if you want to bring up forward priorities to me, I indicate to you what I'm planning to do for next year. It's mostly what I've been doing for the last five years, the same thing, all right? But if you have things you want us to look into, be more specific on, I don't know, it could be cottage break-iners for summer homes or something in relation to school safety or whatever you have in your community that's a problem, that you think we can help, please bring it to the municipality and if I can get something within two weeks, I could add it to my plan. And I do this every year and over the years, I've added some of the concern that we had received and I put it to my operation plan. But that's all I ask for council, if you don't have any question.
Thank you. Anybody new questions?
We're good. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good reports. Showing some progress.
Always moving forward.
We've seen a big progress, you know, since Peggy's there. It's been. Now, it's not joking, you do a good job, I think. You know, we get some good reports, we do, from the public, the seniors. I know most of the seniors, you know.
I know, I'm there.
Yeah, I'm there, yeah. Thank you very much. Okay. Want some time out? Are you in a hurry? You want to keep going or you want to? All right. Low-income exemption application. Did we change anything? We didn't change anything on this from last year?
This is exactly the way that it looked like last year. So the discussion that we'd like for council to have is whether that's acceptable or not. The cost of this exemption program to your, in your financials is approximately $12,000. So it's designed specifically to assist those highest in need. So every year, I think we ask the question, well, I think last year, what we did was we changed the income level so that there was a sliding scale. So there was like zero to 16.5 and you get a certain amount and then that goes down as your income goes up, but then it goes, you know, anything over 18.5 and it would be zero. So that, I mean, we did some work on that, we did some comparison around that across the municipality, but what we found was it's extremely varied depending on which municipal unit. Some of the more, what we see is like, some of the tax exemptions are quite a bit higher in certain municipalities, but what you find is, is also the municipality would usually with much higher assessments than ours. So there's those offsetting considerations. So we expected more applications last year.
Expected more?
We expected more. I budgeted, I budgeted for a higher amount than we, like, we actually changed these tax exemptions to be a bit more inclusive and we didn't catch a lot more people.
Is that right?
It might actually mean that. It might actually mean that the application is still unknown, that like, while we advertise it and while we put it out there, there might be some people that just simply don't, aren't aware of the application or, I mean, it could be as simple as literacy, right? I mean, we don't know for sure, but that's one of the many reasons it could be.
Is this the actual application that you're going to use this year?
Yes.
Just because of the pinky thing?
Sure.
If you look down to, this is for year 2014, 15. If you look, number one, it says owner's income group of 2012 income must be included. Would that be 13 that you did account for? Or am I reading this right?
No, that's actually, I'm glad you raised that, because in the transition year, we would use the same year's income, but the problem we had was the 2013 income is for your April tax return of, so you're filing right now, your personal tax return in 2014 for 2013. And generally, what we would have is a notice of assessment, like by the time you, you know, some people only apply at the end of April, right? And so they do their tax return at the end of April, but by the time they get their notice of assessment, it's too late. So we backed it up a year so that they could use, like, so it's always a year prior, so they should have their notice of assessment for 2012. Now, if they had their notice of assessment for 2013, we would be very flexible around that, but it's to give, it's to give the applicant flexibility around that. Yeah, so it isn't a typo, but I'm glad you raised that.
Yeah, okay, good. Any more questions or? Counselor LeBlanc?
I was just making a motion that we accept, we accept the form as proposed.
Any more questions or comments? Discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay? Motion carried. Next item is a letter of support. Yes, I got a call from the warden of Clare and they're nominating their former warden, Gene Melonson, for the Order of Nova Scotia. Asked me if I would send a letter of support. They need three, they had two already and I told him, yes, I would. So if you, if you support this, we can, we can send it on behalf of council, not only personally, so.
Do you need to hold your own?
Yes.
I so moved that we do nominate the wardens for the.
From the council?
From the council.
Yeah.
To nominate.
A letter of support?
A letter of support for Gene Melonson.
For the Order of Nova Scotia, okay?
Great thing, great, great.
Any more questions? Comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay? Motion carried. Now, the other one, there's another letter and I don't know, I didn't see this yet.
This is a letter that has been requested to support a project that the Village Historique is looking for financial support from province and Akoah. The project is called the Bureau de Poste du Village Historique, so what they're basically doing is setting up, they're setting up a bureau de poste, a post office, post central area for, at the village, you can actually, that you could actually deliver mail to, like, it's actually part of their story, part of their, you know, it's an added value to their tourist experience. Now, it isn't an official Canada Post, Post Office, it's not that. Pardon me?
Where do all the posts?
Yeah, no, except for this one. So, so no, this is actually, it's adding value to their project. It's not a fiscal request, it is a letter of support so that they can get fiscal funding. So they will probably ask for support on this project as part of their annual application for grants, but that is a separate consideration. This letter of support is simply a letter in, like, conceptually to say, look, it's, it looks good, it's part of our strategic alignment because it talks about our region, it talks about, about decaying culture and it's just an additional service that they're providing.
I could probably give them some equipment. I have some home when, that came from my father's store when he had the post office.
I should only, sorry, I should add that they will, they will have interpreters, like, they, they will have the staff in place to actually tell the story, so, so it's, you know, it's a story about how they would get together socially. I'm just reading the letter, so just to make sure that I'm, I'm being clear about what they're asking. So that's the request.
Just a letter of support.
Correct.
I'm second.
Did you want to speak on that or just you were going to?
No, my mic was already on, no.
Oh, okay. The warden's not on. Very efficient. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay? Motion carried. Correspondence and for information, Mariner Center meeting requests. Yeah, we haven't, have we spoke to them on this answer or nothing yet?
No. I had received some responses from council when I sent it out.
Yes.
They were a little all over the board, so I didn't really know what to do.
Yeah.
So I think it should be, should be brought for discussion.
Well, I think, I guess it can't hurt. We can meet with them. There's no sense for, I don't think there's any sense for us to meet, discuss this if we don't know what they're asking or we don't, you know, we might as well meet them first and see what they want or what they want to talk about and then we can, we can meet after that, I would say. This, would, would we want to do this, just one meeting sometimes, a daytime meeting? Well, daytime is kind of hard, but, or, what would be the best way to do this? We're not going to ask them to come here at a meeting, right? We have a meeting just for this?
Yeah, what I gathered from the letter was that they weren't asking for an official presentation to council. What they wanted was, because they've done that and it's been, it hasn't been the board, so I just, I gathered that it was the board, like, the larger group would like to, would like to talk to, to council around, around the operational costs of maintaining the facility.
Okay.
So that was.
We can meet them there?
Yeah, I mean, if we want to get, send it back to them and say, listen, we're interested in meeting with you, set us a date and time and we can take it from there. But I just wanted to know that, I just wanted to know what, where council wanted to go with this, whether they wanted to meet first or meet with them and.
Well, that's my opinion, but I, you know, whatever.
Should meet with them first.
Well, we can't meet and discuss something if we don't know what we're discussing, you know. I, my idea, Counselor Soret?
Well, I think, first of all, before I'd want to meet with them, I'd like to get the financials, their financials sent, so before we meet with them, I could have a look, we should request financials to see, give us an idea of what, what their operation is like. Then I agree with you that we should sit down and meet with them. I think they should come here to meet us in our council chambers. I don't think we should be going there, they should be coming here. That's my, that's my opinion. You know, I guess some of the questions I'd have would be, you know, why do they run a deficit? How come they're running a deficit? I think that should be, you know, on the table and maybe there's reasons for that. You know, maybe it would be the time to ask them while they're here. And, you know, then council could meet us, you suggested after it, see what they have on the table and, you know, will we give them a yearly grant? Would we give them a, like Clare was on the radio today about giving a, instead of funding every year, give them a grant, maybe give them a grant, we'd have to decide that.
So do you want to meet them?
I certainly, certainly would like to meet them, but I'd like to have the financials first. Have to see their financials before we meet them. Look at their financials, what they look like.
Okay.
I'm sure that's, I'm sure that would be easily accommodated by them.
Yeah. Counselor LeBlanc?
Mr. CEO, have you, have you contacted staff in regards to historically what has happened when the Mariner Center was first built? It was my understanding that there was an agreement between Argyle Municipality and the Mariner Center that they would assist in funding initially, provided that they weren't requested for additional funding in the future. Is that correct or have you not?
What I know is that we contributed $750,000 during the initial construction. And what I also know is that the municipality of Argyle did not intend to be an owner of the facility at the time. So that was, that was the deal at the time. Whether or not they'd ever be asked for operational grants, I can't say for certain whether that was agreed upon prior, but I do know that it was certainly not based on an ownership percentage, right?
Right, yeah.
And we have, since that time, provided operational grants at their request, at least twice in the past six years, at least twice, if not three times. We've approved and denied requests during that period of time.
Again, all right, great, thanks for that. We don't know exactly what they want to discuss and a huge percentage, sorry, a huge percentage of our residents use that facility, so we should at least give them the chance to meet us, that's all.
The one thing, if you go back to the history, we used to give them a grant, a yearly grant. When they had the old ring, we gave them a grant for years, just in order to supply ice for, for our municipality.
Remember the other? Okay.
Well, what I think I have in mind is $25,000 we were giving then, I think.
Yeah. That's correct.
Yeah. From my memory, and that's getting shorter.
No, that's fine.
That was over 10 years ago. That was probably 14 years ago.
Oh, yeah, it was the old ring, so, whenever, quite a while ago. But we did that for a long time, until, until they tore it down and build a new one.
Was it $750,000, was that? Did I understand that that was our contribution towards the project, the total contribution from the municipality?
Yes, it was, it was, and what we're doing is, I've asked our historian to pull out some of the historical documents around that because it didn't happen all at once.
No.
There were, there were layers of decisions that had been made. I think there was an initial amount that was approved and then with the project changing, so did the ask. And so it ended up being 750. And it didn't all get paid at once. Some of it got paid at once and some of it got paid over time. So we're trying to gather all of that information.
We gave them so much a year for so many years, but I think what happened, if I remember correctly, when they decided to go with the second ice surface, I think we gave them more then. And that happened because of, Skate Yarmouth said, if we can raise a million dollars, would you want to put a second surface? So that's what they did.
Okay. Makes sense.
Freeman Libby and I remember, we had the presentation here, Neil LeBlanc and whoever was involved in that, in Skate Yarmouth at the time, they raised a lot of money. And that's how we got the second surface, which is great. So anyway, we can, we can meet with them and.
Would the CEO have the numbers or is he, are you asking Mr. Croll to, I think that's who he was that you mentioned, to pick out how much we've given on this new, the Mariner Center over the last, since it's open? Would he be able to pick that up? Like, is it three years, is it five, is it two, and the amount?
What he, yes, I think he'll be able to, he'll be able to establish the initial agreement. We'll be able to follow the financial trail after that. So, so I think there was, again, like, and I am running by memory because I, we had this information, obviously, years passed. So there was an initial amount, as I said, and I think that there were contributions of approximately $20,000 a year, a little over $20,000 a year for multiple years, and that was, that contribution was made to the town of Yarmouth. To offset, I'm presuming, to offset the costs that, that the organization must have occurred preliminarily, because obviously, you know, to build that thing, there was obviously, there was either a mortgage or there was a contribution that was required. So in terms of our operational funding, we have given only twice since 2006, once for $12,500 and another for $7,500.
Eight years.
So those two amounts, $7,500 would have been the most current year.
Yeah.
Would have been last fiscal and $12,500 would have been about two years prior to that.
Yep. Okay, so you're going to contact them and?
Yes, what I'll contact them is I'll request a meeting here and prior to that, I'd like to get a copy of the statements and they'll give us dates and move from there, all right? So, and I guess, depending on when they can meet, we'll leave that to their, I mean, most of those guys, gentlemen, ladies are volunteers, so we'll want to leave it to their schedule.
Yeah. Yeah.
So uh, I'm cognizant of some of you guys' schedules around work and so we'll try to accommodate that if we can.
Okay. All agree? Consensus? Nova Scotia Utility and Review Board, 2014 Municipal Boundary Review. So this is a document that you got back, back February 14th, I guess? Last week?
Yeah.
And uh, could you elaborate on this? This is, okay.
It's, it's for your information, it's just confirming uh, what we actually got from Service Nova Scotia. This is actually coming from?
Yes.
From, it's a user guide, basically, from the U R B.
Okay, yes.
And it's.
Oh yes, okay.
We're, we're exceeding what they're asking.
Yeah.
Sort these spells out there.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, good. Next thing on the agenda, financial request, do we have any? Not listed? Notice of motion, anybody have a notice of motion for future meeting? Question period? Any questions? From the public? In camera, contract negotiations. Okay, we have a motion to. Warden second and all those in favor signify as saying aye.